Good afternoon, everybody. I think we're ready now to resume your submissions, please, Mr. Holland.
Thank you very much. And ladies and lords, can I start by picking up one point which detected from our conversation just before the short of German. In our submission, there's nothing inherently wrong with it being difficult or impossible to register as a TVG, land which is actively being used by the landowner. TVG is, after all, intended to be a place for public recreation where that recreational use takes precedence. The landowner's rights on a property G V are purely residual. It would be inimical to registration as a TVG that someone else was carrying out more than nominal non-recreational activity. That's our position on that. It's not intended to be easy because a TVG is intended to be primarily a recreational area for use by members of a locality. And I ended my submissions with looking at the Court of Appeal judgment, and we say there are real problems, both legal and practical, with the Court of Appeal's interpretation. Firstly, from a legal point of view, as I pointed out, runs counter to Lord Hoffman's majority view in the Oxford case, that it's a one-size-fits-all. And you will recall reading paragraph forty-nine of his judgment wherein he sets out the reasons why, I think he uses the phrase, "it'd be virtually useless to have a system of registration" which wasn't conclusive and which didn't conclusively set out or state the rights which were inherent in registration as a TVG. As I pointed out, there is no statutory provision for registration of different types of TVGs, either different types of recreational activity or the quantum of different types of registration. And but if, as the Court of Appeal has held in this case, the effect of Redcar is that it is, quote, "an intrinsic feature of the scheme for registration of TVGs" that the landowner has the legal right to continue his use of the land as before, where on the facts that is not incompatible with recreational use? The recreational rights of the locals are in practice forever constrained by the nature of the landowner's use during the twenty-year period. It then does make registration virtually useless. As in order to ascertain the nature of the locals' rights to recreate, one has to go beyond the register and conduct a detailed examination of the landowner's use during the relevant period. Now, the landowners, the locals, will not always or at all be aware of the landowner's use. For example, what if this port was one operating at night and during the day the recreators were able to walk up and down the quayside uninterrupted? But at night, if they tried to do so, there would have been commercial traffic preventing them to do so. Secondly, an inspector's report will focus primarily on the behaviour or conduct of the recreators and not necessarily the behaviour or conduct of the landowner over the same period. Yet, if the Court of Appeal are right in this case, it is the latter which is as or at least as important as the former. Indeed, even here, in this case, while we have had a detailed inspector's reports and a detailed judgment, there are no exact findings of the exact quantum of use. I've given you what, right at the outset of my submissions, what is the best evidence, the assumption. But there's no evidence as to the exact usage during the day or every single day. There was some amateur, and I use that, not in root set, but some amateur traffic surveys carried out. But you will see the conclusions of Mr. Justice Barling and the inspector. They are, to an extent, impressionistic. And therefore, it might be difficult, for example, to ascertain, well, in the future, for example, what happens if the landowner wishes to intensify the user? What happens if they have a particularly lucrative contract for bringing in PPE into the country and that requires an extra ten, twelve, twenty ships a year? Will they be able lawfully to do that, to intensify their user of the TVG, crossing it more regularly? What happens, for example, if the landowner kept no records of the twenty years previously? How is the landowner in future to know what the extent of his rights? What if, as here, the landowner only owns the land for a part of the twenty-year period? Whose use counts? Is it the landowners or the landowner, its tenants and licensees as well? And as I've said, how closely must the landowner's post-registration activity mirror its pre-registration use? One can foresee, as I've said, all sorts of circumstances where the landowner might wish to intensify the use in the future, but one doesn't know from the Court of Appeal's judgment whether that is possible or not. One doesn't know whether they can intensify to the same use, whether they can bring in a different cargo. Suppose they wanted to bring in cattle or livestock and have those transported or driven over. One doesn't know whether that would be an acceptable behaviour in the future on the part of the landowner. Can it work at weekends? Can they open it for weekends? Can it work nights? One simply doesn't know. And so there's all sorts of practical difficulties which we say are given rise, and that derives from the fact that the Parliament has chosen, quite deliberately, we say, not to classify different types of TVGs. My lords, I'm going to turn now very briefly to the Health and Safety Act legislation. And we say that applies as well. This is a workplace. We've dealt with it in paragraphs eighty to eighty-seven of our written case. But section three of the Health and Safety Act applies. You'll find that at page five, four, nine. And regulation seventeen of the nineteen ninety-two regulations apply, and that's at five, five, one. And sorry, it's five, five, two, I apologize. And that provides that in a workplace, traffic routes have to be rendered safe such that pedestrians, non-employees pedestrians and vehicles are kept separate on a safe distance. Now, the fact that there has been no incident or no prosecution under this, we say, is irrelevant because the criminal offence is committed by there being a risk of danger to pedestrians or to employees under the Health and Safety Act legislation. And that's, as pointed out in the Tangerine Confectionery case, which for your notes is one, five, six, eight. So if in the future rules or standards change, the operation of the port changes, the attitude of the HSE changes, then the fact of registration will greatly restrict the landowner's ability to respond by controlling the behaviour of the locals. It won't be able to do so because they will be exercising a TVG right. It will thus, if there are any problems in future, have to restrict its own activities or cease them altogether. It's somewhat ironic. It was that the, it was the, it was a lengthy contact with the HSE which precipitated all of this because the HSE insisted that my clients put up a barrier on the quayside. They did so, and that precipitated the application for registration of a TVG. And we say again, the landowner cannot be said to have acquiesced in the assertion by the locals of a right which might potentially restrict their own future working. Now, I've finished ground one. That's all I propose to say on that. The rest is set out in our written case, and I propose to turn now to ground two, if that meets with your approval. I note that Lady Arden has disappeared from screen. I can't hear you, but I can see you.
I think Lady Arden's muted, she's not now.
Okay, okay, I'm grateful. I'm sorry, Lady. But Lord Burrows, I think, had a question.
Sorry, Lady Arden, do you want to go first?
No, I didn't have a question.
Oh, sorry. Yes, it was just on the health and safety. I mean, this is an issue whether or not one decides anything about the village green, surely. This has to apply, whatever the status of the village green. Why is this of any relevance to us today?
Well, on most village greens, you don't get commercial activity by a landlord, by a landowner. That's the point. A village green is purely somewhere where the
Sorry, I probably phrased that extremely badly. I'll try again. Your clients have obligations in relation to health and safety and members of the public irrespective and unaffected by what we decide in this case, surely?
Yes, they do.
Exactly the same health and safety problems or issues arose before this registration and if there is no continued registration, will continue after it. So isn't this a red herring?
Well, no, because after registration, if, for example, the HSE were to say, "Right, TW, we have had a look at the traffic here and we think you must separate out the pedestrians from the commercial traffic." Now, as of now, well, prior to registration, we would be able to do that. But post-registration, we would not because if we, for example, said to the recreators, "Sorry, we are blocking off part of the TVG and you can only use this part of the land closest to the quay, which we're sectioning off effectively some sort of a pathway," then they would say, "No, you're not entitled to do that. We are entitled to recreate over the entirety of the TVG. And if you block us off," it's a criminal offence, in fact, to do that. And therefore, if we are to meet the requirements of the HSE, not being able to control the activities of the recreators, we'd have to adjust our own activities. I think that's the point. It's to do with the risk afterwards.
Thank you.
I'm grateful. Ground two, we deal with this in paragraphs eighty-eight to one, one, four of our written case. I've already taken you to the terms of the Victorian statutes, and can I reiterate three points? First of all, we say the terms are clear. Secondly, they represent a balance struck by Parliament as to what is and is not permitted on a TVG. That balance is heavily in favour of the recreators and very limiting of the activities which a landowner can carry out, as I've already described. The rights of the landowner or a TVG are purely residual. Those provisions have not been amended or disapplied by Parliament since nineteen sixty-five or after two thousand and six. And we say here, the Court of Appeal has read them down in an illegitimate way. Not only does it undermine the clarity of the wording of the statute provisions, it renders the offences hopelessly vague and either impossible to prosecute or impossible to defend. Effectively, the Court of Appeal have read a proviso into both statute provisions, which is set out in paragraph eighty-nine of our written case, but it's to the effect that activity previously undertaken by the landowner, which is the same or perhaps sufficiently similar to activity previously undertaken by the landowner or perhaps its predecessor in title during the twenty-year prescriptive period or perhaps even earlier, cannot be an offence. And they are forced to do that because their reasoning is circular, and we've said in paragraph seventy-one and seventy-three of the Court of Appeal judgment. They say firstly, as Redcar says, that recreational use, nec v, nec clam, nec precario, is sufficient to give a TVG right, no matter what the landowner's concurrent use during the relevant period, then the Victorian statutes have to be read down so as not to criminalise the landowner's same behaviour after registration. But this starts, we say, from the premise that the principle of coexistence in Redcar applies in all cases. It ignores the potential effect of the Victorian statutes prior to registration, as I've explained, the Supreme Court did entirely understandably. It assumes as its starting point that one should consider the TVG scheme without the Victorian statutes and then only consider them after, their effect after registration. And we say also, the way the Court of Appeal has read down the individual provisions is illegitimate. If one looks at section twelve of the Act and how Lord Justice Lewis deals with it in paragraph seventy-one of his judgment, he reads into the provision by using the preamble, the element of the common law offence of public nuisance, but the act in question is not warranted by law. And he cites the case of the Queen of Remington in that regard. He says it has to be a public nuisance. However, as the court in the Remington case makes clear, what they were dealing with there was confined to consideration of the elements of the common law offence of public nuisance. That is, the small category that are still there of common law offences of public nuisance. They were making it clear that we're dealing with that small residual category which are not specifically dealt with by statute. Now, those elements have no application here when one's dealing with a clearly defined series of statutory offences which are not even expressly deemed to be public nuisances. He then purports to apply, this is Lord Justice Lewis, his reading of the Redcar case, to assert that the landowner's previous behaviour is warranted by law. And that's paragraph seventy-two and seventy-three of his judgment, which is at pages two, one, two and two, one, three. And we would ask this, this, if these activities are set out in section twelve are only criminal if they were otherwise public nuisances, why would Parliament have enacted the statute book? And we would say also, as we do in paragraph ninety-seven of our written case, given the width of what I've described as the fifth, fourth and fifth offences, that is, doing any act whatsoever to the injury of such town or village green or to the interruption of use enjoyment thereof as a place of exercise, these would necessarily be committed when any of the others are committed, if the Court of Appeal is right. Further, it's only the second, as I pointed out, there's only one of these offences which is expressly said to be committed without lawful authority. That's the one leading or driving any cattle or animal. And there's no warrant for implying that with that qualification without lawful authority into that statutory provision as a whole when one of the separate offences expressly includes it. That would render those words OTOs. And then, if one looks at seventy-three of his judgment at page two, one, three, he introduces further uncertainty into the offences in paragraph seventy-three by referring to both the concept of give and take and by reference to the physical setting. And this effectively, we say, introduces a value judgement into this. The interpretation given also means that an activity on the TVG which is carried out by a third party will be a criminal offence, whereas the same activity carried on on behalf of a landowner will or may not be.
Turning to It would be helpful, sorry, Mr. Holland, could I just ask you? It would be helpful if overnight you could give us one or two examples of the, to support the submission, that the offences would not be prosecutable because of the doubts about what actually is covered. Because obviously, it's a principle of law that a criminal statute must be clear so you know when you're offending.
Yeah.
Give us a few examples at some point overnight would be fine.
Yes, Lady, of course. The point I'm moving on to make, the point that the respondents make is, well, if the effect of Lord Justice Lewis or the Court of Appeal's judgement here is effectively to read down the offences, albeit in a vague way, then that redounds to the advantage of the defendant or a potential defendant and the basis that it makes it, it'll make it much more difficult because the burden is on the prosecutor beyond reasonable doubt to prove the offences. But there's two points of that, to deal with that now. A, why is Parliament leaving on the statute? Why, it's not for the courts to render completely OTOs, or unprosecutable, to use that ghastly word, an offence which Parliament has chosen to remain on the statute book. And secondly, the vagueness of the offence works the other way. If the point of criminal offences is to regulate behaviour by potential offence or by the members of the public, then they must know whether they're committing an offence or not. They must, it must be clear to them, am I, in doing this, in driving my cattle over this land, in driving this HGV over this, am I committing offence? Well, I don't know because it's very vague. So it cuts both ways in that regard. But yes, my lady, I'm content, myself, my Larry Junior will get together and think of some examples. And I was dealing with section twenty-nine, and Lord Justice Lewis deals with that at paragraph seventy-five to seventy-eight of his judgment. And he reads down section twenty-nine by the fact that the activities are deemed to be public nuisances. However, as I've already said, the elements, Remington, the case, is dealing with the elements of public law offence, the elements of the public nuisance offence. And they don't apply to statutory offences such as these, even if they are somehow deemed to be public nuisances. We would say the clear implication is that these elements, the facts of this offence or the elements of this offence would not otherwise be public nuisances if they were not deemed to be by statute. Otherwise, again, why would Parliament act? And we say, Lord Justice Lewis is wrong in paragraph seventy-six to assert that the legislative intent of section twenty-nine was to prevent public nuisances per se. We've referred to the original preamble, which is page one, 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 six. And it's clear that it was intended to be a supplementary provision to add offences to, or further offences to what was already in section twelve of the Enclosure Act, the earlier of the Victorian statute. And to that extent, paragraph twenty-nine of the Zoma case, which Lord Justice Lewis relies upon in seventy-six, provides no support at all for the proposition that you can rely on a preamble or a deeming provision because even if its purpose is, as Lord Justice Lewis says, that purpose is carried forward only, quote, "as far as necessary to achieve the legislative purpose." That's a quote from Zoma. And here, there's no need to add any gloss to the clear words. Parliament's legislative intention is clear. And we identify in paragraphs one oh five to one oh one, four of our written case that there are three major problems with the Court of Appeal's interpretation of the Victorian statutes. One, uncertainty. Two, unfairness to the landowners, potential defendants. And three, the undermining of the statutory TVG scheme. Now, I've already dealt with the last point and mirrors the point made in relation to how the Redcar decision similarly undermines the statute scheme. But towards uncertainty is concerned, we say it's clear, the Court of Appeal's interpretation of the Victorian statutes introduces a great deal of uncertainty into the offences set out in them. In order to determine whether a landowner and perhaps any tenant or licensee of the landowner is guilty of an offence, the prosecutor will have to prove not only the factual elements set out in the statute provisions themselves, but also that any complaint of act was not the same or sufficiently similar to an act which was done once done by the landowner or his predecessor during the twenty-year period which led to registration, which period may be decades in the past. Point made, and then I pick up, the point made by the response is because they're criminal provisions, then any uncertainty would redound in favour of the potential defendant. I've already dealt with that. A, it makes it unprosecutable and what's the point in having such an offence? And B, it renders it uncertain to the potential defendant or any member of the public whether they are indeed committing an offence.
Is there a principle of statutory interpretation that you should not interpret a criminal offence so as to be vague?
I don't think there is. I think it's simply, it has to be, I think there isn't a principle that criminal law has to be interpreted so it's clear.
Yes, I thought the words.
Is the point. I think we cite it in our written case.
When you come to it, I'd like to know.
Yes, I will. My Larry Junior will dig it out and you get some noises off. But yes, there is, it has to be clear. And yes, it has to be interpreted down in such a way that if there is doubt, it goes in favour of the prospective defendant. But we would say it's trite to say any statute provision should be interpreted so it's clear. But certainly provisional, a criminal one, should be interpreted so that it's clear.
Paragraph one hundred and seven on page one, one, seven.
I'm very grateful.
I think.
That's it, yes, that's it. Yep, and it's Benham, I've cited, Bogdanic. I think it's a judgement of Mr. Justice Sales, but I anyway, but yes, it has to be clear. And it says beyond paraventure. Anyway, I've got an example here. Suppose in thirty years' time, a local inhabitant of Mistley complains that his dog walking on this tract of land, this TVG, is being unreasonably interrupted by the increased volume of traffic on the quay. Then either, if the burden is on the prosecutor, presumably, and he says a criminal offence is being committed, if the burden is on the prosecutor, presumably the prosecutor must prove that the volume of traffic is higher than occurred at any point between nineteen eighty-eight and two thousand and eight. Or if there is an evidential burden on the defendant, the landowner, the landowner must prove that the volume of traffic is no higher than at any point between nineteen eighty-eight and two thousand and eight, at a time when he might not even be the owner of the land and when there might be no records to show whether, to what extent, there had been commercial traffic on the land. And indeed, one also has to understand, if the Court of Appeal are right, one has to measure whether the interruption, the dog walking, is also caused by an increase in the volume of dog walking. Because it may be the case that the landowner is only doing what was done during the twenty-year prescriptive period, but because there's an increase in the recreators' activity, that has caused the conflict. And so that's another element because it might be open, the landowner say, "Well, I'm not doing anything differently." It's the recreators who are using it with greater frequency, hence the clash. So it's vague in that way as well. It's unfair, we say, on the landowner, on whom will rest at least the evidential burden in any criminal trial, to have to prove the activities which were carried on by him or his predecessor concurrently with the recreators, perhaps many years ago. The landowner might not have kept records. Memories may have faded. Witnesses may have died. As time passes, the landowner's ability to prove past activity will diminish nothing. And as I've said, there's no register noting the activities of the landowner during the twenty-year registration period. That's all I propose to say on ground two. I'll now turn to ground three. We deal with that at paragraphs one hundred and fifteen to one hundred and twenty-five of our written case. As I've said, the courts have repeatedly recognised that the use of the words in the nineteen sixty-five and two thousand and six acts, as of right, indicate that the principles of prescriptive acquisition apply by analogy. If you want the reference there, that's the Sunningwell case at three, four, nine, C, which is at page seven, five, eight of your bundles, and the New Haven case at paragraph ninety-one of following, which is at page seven, three, one. Courts have also repeatedly emphasised that the root of prescription is acquiescence. Can I ask you to look at the Sunningwell case, three, three, fifty, three, fifty, one, at seven, five, nine of your bundles, which is volume one divided twelve? And if you go to seven, five, nine, and it's right at the bottom, letter H of that page, and this is the judgement of Lord Hoffman. It became established that such user had to be, in the Latin phrase, nec v, nec clam, nec precario, not by force nor stealth nor the licence of the owner. This requirement in the case of custom, scene, mills and cochester corporation. The unifying element in these three vitiating circumstances was that each constituted a reason why it would not have been reasonable to expect the owner to resist the exercise of the right. In the first case, because rights should not be acquired by the use of force. In the second, because the owner would not have known of the user. And in the third, because he consented to the user for a limited period. And Dalton Langus, as Justice Frye advising us, lords, was able to rationalise law prescriptions as follows. The whole law prescription and the whole law which governs the presumption of or inference of ground covenant rests on acquiescence. Courts and the judges have had, of course, various expedients for quieting the possession of persons in the exercise of rights, which have not been resisted by the persons against whom they are exercised. But in all cases, it appears to me that acquiescence and nothing else is the principle upon which these expedients arise. And just over the page, page three, five, two of the report, seven, six, one. Again, at the bottom, letter H. His lordship says, "My lords, I pause to observe that Lord Blackburn does not say that there must have been evidence that individual members of the public using the way believed there'd been a dedication. He's concerning himself, as the English theory requires, of how the matter would have appeared to the owner of the land. The user by the public must have been, as Mr. Justice Barron Park said in relation to private rights away in Brighton Walker, openly and in the manner that a person rightfully entitled would have used it. The presumption arises, as Justice Frye said, the prescription generally, Dalton Langus, from the acquiescence." There are also statements to the same effect in the Beresford case at paragraph seventy six. That's page nine, one, one for your notes. And in Barkas at paragraph seventeen, to which I'm going to turn very shortly. Now, if the root of prescription is acquiescence, that is imported into the statutory scheme here, is the common law principle of prescriptive acquisition, then we would ask this, can it be said that the landowner has acquiesced in the assertion by the recreators of a right which would render criminal his own hitherto lawful activities on his own land? And we would say the answer is no. If we look at paragraph thirty one of our three. We say, "Courts have repeatedly emphasised that the central question to be addressed in this context is the quality of the user by the local inhabitants and in particular, how that behaviour might objectively judged appear to the landowner." There's a great rate of authority and I've already taken you, we are still at page three, five, two to three, five, three in Sunningwell, at page seven, six, one to seven, six, two of your bundle. Let me just go over the page, page three, five, four, which you will find at seven, six, three of your bundles. And it's the paragraph F to G. The decision in the case was that the reasons why people used the road were irrelevant. It was sufficient that they used it as a right. I rather doubt whether in explaining the term parenthetically as involving a belief that they were exercising a public right, Mr. Justice Tomlin meant to say more than Lord Blackburn had as Madam Brody. Maybe that they must have used it in a way which would suggest to a reasonable landowner that they believed they were exercising a public right. To acquire an inquiry into the subjective state of mind of users of the road would be contrary to the whole English day prescription, which, as I hope I have demonstrated, depends on evidence of acquiescence by the landowner in rise to inference or presumption of prior granted dedication. This purpose, the actual state of mind of the road user is plainly irrelevant. And there's various statements in Beresford to that effect. I won't direct you to them, but I'll give you references, paragraph six, fourteen, sixty seven to eight, and seventy six to seven. That's up pages of your bundle, eight, nine, two to three, eight, nine, four, nine, oh, eight and nine, eleven. And we've already looked at that paragraph in the Oxford case, paragraph fifty seven, letter E of Lord Hoffman's judgment. And what I'd like to do is draw your attention now to the Barkas case, which is in volume two, divider twenty one. It's your page eight, four, three. And if you look at the following paragraphs, Lord Newburger, at page, paragraph sixteen, which is eight, four, three. And he deals with Redcar. The subsequent case of Lewis and Redcar, which was concerned with the two thousand and six act. The Walker of Guesting, the court confirmed to paragraph twenty that as a right is sufficiently described by the tripartite test, nec clam, nec precario, as established by authority. I'm prepared to accept that it's possible, as Lord Carnworth suggests. So there may be exceptional cases involving claims to village greens, but this does not apply, but I'm doubtful of that. And a paragraph thirty, Lord Walker accepts as a general proposition that if a right is to be obtained by prescription, persons claiming that right must by their conduct bring home to the landowner that a right is being asserted against him. So the landowner has to choose between warning the trespassers off or eventually finding their established asserted right against him. And he goes on to paragraph twenty one, which is at page eight, four, four of your bundle. He says this, "In my judgment, this argument is as compelling as simple. So long as land is held under a provision such as section twelve, one of the nineteen eighty five act, it appears to me that members of the public have a statutory right to use the land for recreational purposes. Therefore, they use the land by right and not as trespassers, so that no question of user as a right arrives." In Sunningwell, Lord Hoffman indicated that whether user as a right should be judged by how the matter would have appeared to the owner of the land, a question which must, I should be add, I should add, be assessed objectively. But perhaps the clearest statement of the principle is in the judgment of Lord Carnworth at paragraph sixty five. And can I start at paragraph sixty one, which is page eight, five, four of your bundles, my lords and ladies? Paragraph sixty one, Lord Stott's analysis, and this is referring to Lord Scotland Beresford, shows that the tripartite test cannot be applied in the abstract. It needs to be seen in the statutory and factual context of the particular case. It's not a distinct test, but rather a means to arrive at the appropriate inference to be drawn from the circumstances of the case as a whole. This includes consideration of what Robert Hope of Craighead has called the quality of the user. That is, whether the user for at least twenty years was of such amount and in such manner as would reasonably be regarded as being assertion of a public right, see Redcar, paragraph sixty seven. Where there is room for ambiguity, the user by the inhabitants must, in my view, be such as to make clear not only that a public right is being asserted, but the nature of that right. And then he continues over the page, that's your page eight, five, five, at paragraph sixty four. When he says this, he's dealt with the Cumberland and Cullseith District Council dollar land case. But he says this, sixty four, "The sin cannot necessarily, which is a public right, to do with a public right of way. The sin cannot necessarily be said of recreational use of land in public ownership, where land is owned by a public authority with part dedicated for public recreation, as is laid out in such. There may be no reason to attribute subsequent public use to the assertion of distinct village green right. Boy can also be tested by reference to the general proposition cited by Lord Newburger at paragraph sixteen, that if a right is to be obtained by prescription, persons claiming that right must by their conduct bring home to the landowner that a right is being asserted against him. So the landowner has to choose between warning the trespassers off or eventually finding they have established the asserted right against him. It follows that, in cases of possible ambiguity, the conduct must bring home to the owner not merely that a right is being asserted, but that it is a village green right. Where the owner is a public authority, no adverse inference can sensibly draw from its failure to warn off users to trespassers if it has validly and visibly committed the land for public recreation under parts of nothing to do with the acquisition of village green rights." Now, I accept the context of that is public land. But there's nothing to say, for example, that, there's no indication that in cases of possible ambiguity, the conduct must bring home to the owner not merely that a right is being asserted, but it's a village green right, that that's not a more general application we would submit. And that passage was again cited in the subsequent New Haven case by Lord Newburger. If you go to page seven, two, four, which is at volume one, divider eleven. Again, this was another public authority case. If you go to its paragraph sixty eight of Lord Newburger's judgment. He says, and that's page seven, two, three of your bundles, my ladies and lords. "The majority of Court Appeal agreement is Justice Ousley, considering that it was essential that any licence be communicated in habits of the locality before it could be said the usage of land was by right. That is certainly a normal rule where one is concerned with private landowner, subject to the point discussed in forty one to forty three above, namely where it's possible or appropriate to infer a consent or licence from surrounding circumstances, even though there's no communication of a consent point which may well require reconsideration in light of cases referred in paragraph forty five above. Support for such a proposition can be found, and he cites several cases, including Sunningwell, Lewis, Barkas." And he said, "And most recently Barkas, where at paragraph twenty one, Lord Newburger of Abbotsbury, PSC, quoted from Lord Hoffman's opinion in Sunningwell that whether a user was as a right should be judged by how the matter would have appeared to the owner of the land, adding that that question should be assessed objectively." He then, at paragraph seventy, cites not only his own judgment of Barkas, that's over the page at seven, two, four of your bundles, my ladies and lords, but also that particular paragraph that I quoted from Lord Carnworth. And paragraph seventy one, "In our judgment, the position of present case is indistinguishable from that in Barkas, the purposes citing whether the use of the land, the question of member of the public was as a right. In this case, as in Barkas, the legal position binding with landowner or user of the land, so there's a public law right derived from statute for the public to go onto the land and use it for recreational purposes. Therefore, in this case, as in Barkas, the recreation or use of the land, the question about habits was by right, not as a right." Now, my ladies and lords, I accept that both the Barkas case and the New Haven case involved land owned by public authorities and it was in the Lancashire case, drew on the New Haven case in asserting in relation to that. But we say that properly summarises the emphasis and that is properly placed in this statutory scheme. Also, the recreators' behaviour would have objectively appeared to the reasonable landowner. And the emphasis that that behaviour should bring home to the landowner that a village green right is being asserted. And we say that no reasonable landowner could possibly think that members of the public were in circumstances such as here asserting a right to do whatever doing. It cannot rationally be said that the landowner has acquiesced in the establishment of a TVG right if the activity the landowner is undertaking on the land is legally inconsistent with any such right actually existing. The relevant use must therefore be insufficient to have objectively demonstrated the assertion of that. Now, I accept, and no doubt the respondents will point out, that in Redcar, the Supreme Court expressly said that there was no such second or third element. There was no such additional element. However, it's worth noting that Lords Brown and Kerr were content to adopt that position only because they thought that it wasn't a one size fits all regime. If they had, in my submission, they would have dissented, they would have held that there was something more. In fact, Lord Brown expressly says so. And even though it's clear that their lordships in the Redcar case clearly held that there wasn't a third test, there are elements where, as I've said, I pointed out, if you look at some of the passages and speeches, where they do emphasise that the question is how the behaviour of the recreators would appear to a reasonable, objectively appear to a reasonable landowner. If you go back to the Redcar case and look at that paragraph in the judgment of Lord Hope. And I'm looking at six, three, four and six, three, five, we've already looked. Now, paragraph sixty three, I accept disagrees with Mr. Justice Sullivan in Lang, when the latter judge had said that you have to look at how the behaviour, that's a guiding principle. You have to look at that, it's paragraph eighty three of the Lang judgment that we've already looked at. And it's clear that he disagrees with Mr. Justice Sullivan on that point. But paragraph sixty seven, at page sixty five, he then says this, "In the light of that description, I think it's possible to analyse the structure of section fifteen four in this way. The first question to be addressed is the quality of the user during the twenty year period." So I say there's at least an ambiguity there, because in one hand you say, well, there's not a, another test. I don't think Mr. Justice Sullivan was right in that. But on the other hand, he said, well, you've got to look at the quality of the user during the twenty year period. And again, at paragraph thirty six, in Lord Walker's speech, paragraph's judgment, paragraph six, two, page six, two, five. Again, we've looked at this, "In the light of these other authorities cited, Mr. Lawrence, I've no difficulty accepting that Lord Hoffman was absolutely right saying, if their prescription is concerned with how the matter would have appeared to the owner of the land." Again, we say that's consistent with how we put ground three.
So, Mr. Lawrence.
Yes.
Yeah. I understand that you are saying that it has to, how does it appear objectively to a landowner? And the physical actions on the ground could only be consistent with village green rights. There's no right of way or any other right. Your argument then depends upon how does anybody sensibly agree to have such a right if it criminalises their activity? But objectively, the only right that's being asserted could only be a village green right. They're going there for pleasure, for pastime. I can't see any other reason for being there.
Yeah. Well, we would submit, my lord, that a reasonable landowner would assume that no right at all is being asserted. Because it, because they're walking on pace of land. We are driving over the land regularly, using it for commercial activity. And they are using it with our tolerance. We don't object because it doesn't particularly interfere with our commercial activities. But the reasonable landowner wouldn't assume that any right at all is being asserted. That's the point. They're doing it simply because it's a nice place to walk and they've got no right to do so at all. It's the, I think it's what Lord Carnworth said, not only a right, there has to be a right, but a village green right. And you may be right, okay, if you stood back and thought about it, well, what, if they are asserting a right, what right could they be asserting? But you have to get to the point whereby you think they're asserting a right at all. Is that clear?
Thank you very much.
Sorry.
Sorry, Mr. Lawrence, just before we leave that point. It is absolutely clear, is it, that there is no question of any other rights in relation to this area? I mean, there is no conceivable question about public rights of access or anything of that kind.
I think one of the reasons that the inspector and the judge found that the wandering was on no defined route is to negative any implication that there was a public right of way arising. Because I think you can get, if you're, one of the reasons, where a public highway kind of arises by presumed dedication. And I think there's a deliberate finding here by the inspector that it's not over a defined route. I've always assumed that the reason there was that finding was effectively negatives any assertion that there might be a right of way over a defined route. But it might be, I suppose, you could say, well, would a landowner realise that there was a public right of way? There wasn't a public right of way? But yes, it's difficult to see if someone is wandering over your open key side like this. There is any right being asserted other than perhaps a public right of way or a right to recreate. But you have to get there first. You have to get that the landowner would stand back and think, these people who are wandering over my land are actually asserting a right to do so. How would they think, well, look, if the landowner then stood back and thought, well, hold on, if there is a village green right here, it's going to criminalise potentially my activity and I don't want to do that. if there is a town of village green right here, it's going to criminalize potentially my activity and I don't want to do that. I'm not lying, I don't want that to happen. I think that's the point. Sorry, my lord, Lord Stevens.
Just could you remind me, I thought a public right of way has to go from one public place to another public place.
That's right, that's the point, that's why I said.
They can't be circular.
Not, that's right, well, I don't know whether it can be circular, I don't know off the top of my head. And I'll look that up, but I think the point about it being over a known defined route is to emphasize that it is a, it's a right of recreation. Yeah. I'm sorry, I'm just thinking off the top of my head and listening to noises off, which are not, well, they're not helpful to you, listening to my interchange with them. And I'm sorry, and if I have more thoughts on that, my lord, I let you, you will know and I let my opponents know in writing. But yes, I think that's right, but my primary point is you need to get there first. You need to get that the behaviour is assertion of any right, a right at all. And if it's a right which is going to criminalize your existing activity, then that's not, we say, how a reasonable landowner would interpret that, oh, they're asserting a right, which is going to be a village green rights, which just mean that they're going to have a right not only to do, to walk around with their dogs, but to fly kites, to have a picnic or even erect a maple. And we say it simply cannot be right, the casual recreational user by a sufficient number of local people on a piece of land, when done peacefully, openly, without express permission or overt conflict for a twenty year period, can without more and in all cases suffice to create a TVG under section fifteen, no matter what the nature of the landowner's activities on that land during a prescriptive period. As Lord Hope recognized in Redcar, there must be some situations when the activities of the owner and those of the recreators cannot sensibly coexist at all. And we say the answer lies in the absurdity of asserting that an owner is accepting the assertion of a right, whilst the owner is himself continuing to do something which is inconsistent with the presence of that right. The logical consequence is that the quality of the recreational user by the locals during the prescriptive period is objectively judged in these circumstances insufficient to bring home to a landowner that by recreating as they are, the people of the locality are asserting a TVG right. My ladies and lords, that, those are my submissions for the moment, unless you have any further questions for me. Yes.
Can I just be absolutely clear about your basic proposition? I'm assuming that you accept the give and take principle up to a point. Am I right in thinking that that point would be defined as the point at which it would involve criminalizing activity that the landowner has been continuing for the previous years? Or is there some other qualification to the give and take principle that you'd want us to think about?
Well, I suppose it depends what one means, I'm afraid, by the give and take principle. And as I've said, the give and take principle is not the civility principle. Because the civility principle only deals with already defined rights. And you get the nail on the head as to what is the give and take principle? As I understand what the Court of Appeal here derived from the Supreme Court in Redcar, is that the so-called give and take principle, the principle of coexistence, limits, effectively freezes in time on registration the possible or the lawful activities of the landowner on one hand and the recreators on the other. That is, that, bang, you take, I think it's the date in two thousand and eight, at which this was first registered as a TVG or Fumway. And you say, right, the recreators now have a town of village green right under section fifteen to do what they were doing prior to that date. However, the landowner has a right to use its land up to that date, in the same quantum, up to that date. And but as I, we criticize that because it's very vague and it doesn't.
Sorry, can I just cut across this, though?
Please do, please do.
The difficulty, I suppose, and the reason I'm posing this question, is it's unclear to me whether you are accepting a give and take principle at all or whether you're accepting it to some extent, but not where it involves criminalization of the landowner's activities.
I'm certainly the latter, but I suppose there are limits. I mean, I think it's the Lord Stevens golf or the Lady back golf cup principle. Would I accept that, it's certainly the case, I would, that if whatever the activities the landowner is carrying on, if those were being criminalized, then I would accept the given, the so-called give and take principle cannot apply there. If they're not being criminalized, well, it depends, I mean, we say the criminal offences are very wide. And that's where I started off this afternoon, there's nothing wrong, inherently wrong in it being difficult or impossible to register a TVG where the landowner is actively using the land. And you have to ask yourself, what activities by the landowner will not be criminalized? There'll be a fairly small number of activities, I suppose, that won't be criminalized. And I say, in the Lang case, Mr Justice Sullivan said grass cutting will be all right, because that's, you're doing something for the good of the recreation. But hay cutting won't, because that's a commercial activity.
But that sounds to me then as if you're making a very, very wide proposition that would cut back fundamentally our ways of thinking about town and village green. If you're saying there is no such principle of give and take or equivalent or whatever you want to call it, that every single case is potentially criminalized, criminalizing activities of the landowner. Isn't that rather a sweeping proposition?
Well, no, my lord, I mean, on the basis, this is what I started off with. There are not many cases that we can find where recreators have attempted to register as TVGs land that a landowner is actively using. Most of the cases where TVGs have been registered, the landowner has not been overtly using the land. That's the point.
Well, I think you were combining it originally to commercial activities, but it now sounds as if it's any activities.
Well, it's, I certainly combine it to, I certainly say it applies in this case by a country mile, this case isn't nowhere near borderline. But the question is what activities by a landowner on land will be criminalized by the TVG? It might not necessarily be criminal, be commercial activity. But the point is this, and what I was trying perhaps and failing to bring home when I made my initial submission this afternoon, is that there's nothing wrong with that. A TVG is an area for public recreation. And the law is such that landowners, anyone who owns land for TVG has bare minimum rights, residual rights over it. Why? Because the primary purpose is for public recreation. But anything the landowner does on that land, which gets in the way of that, is a potentially criminal offence. Now, as I say, if you're looking at all the other cases, for example, the the public law cases, these were tracts of land which weren't being used necessarily by the landowners, the public authorities. And that's why they had to rely upon the statutory schemes pursuant to which they held. There was the beach at New Haven that had been formed by, I think, the construction of the port decades previously to that. And it wasn't used by the port authority, the landowner in that case, it was used by locals to recreate, to swim and walk. So there was no question of any, but no question of any activity by the landowner on the site. The trap grounds was a case of complete wasteland, so that's wasteland. And say a third of it was underwater and the rest of it was difficult and inaccessible, said by certain defined pathways, but there was no question that the landowner is using that in any way. The first case where there was some question of that was the Lang case. And the next case was the Redcar case. And I say, there's nothing in, you say, I'm cutting across, making a radical inroad, it's not. It's simply bringing TVGs back to what they were originally intended to be, which was areas of land which were, have been used by the public for recreational purposes and are not actively used by the landowner. Because if it's actively used by the landlord, that's inimical, inimical to its registration as a TVG. So you wouldn't be cutting vast swathes off the principles of TVG registration to do this. This is, we accept an extreme case.
Can I just, yeah, try and get a little bit further on the question of the relevance or otherwise of commercial use? Because I'm not sure that commercial adds very much to it. It's a descriptor perhaps, rather than a necessary element in what's going on. If you think about the case with Mr Justice Sullivan, the Lang case, the hay would have been a problem. Grass cutting wouldn't, but that's because the hay would have needed to remain standing till it became hay and then be harvested. So it would have got in the way. Indeed, isn't that what the locals were doing by removing it so that it didn't get in the way? It's not because it was commercial activity.
That's right. I accept that. It's, and the reason I emphasize commercial is A, because it's the facts of this case, and B, if it's commercial, it can't be said to be in any way recreational. But yes, I accept what we're looking at is whether the facts of an offence have been committed or potentially committed. And there's nothing in the Victorian statutes which limit what used to be known, when I studied criminal laws, the actus reus of these offences to commercial activity alone. And you perfectly, be perfectly possible to commit those offences. It's the result of, it's the outcome of the offences which are, is criminal, or the outcome of the activity. And the motive of the person carrying out the activity is irrelevant. Technically, yes, but it's just it's easier because it's the facts of this case. And there's no way my client's activities could be said to be in any way recreational. Like, for example, the argument might have been run in Redcar that they are, the golfing was recreational. And that's why I make, yes, you're right. Sorry, Lord Stevens.
Yes, so I was trying to think in terms of a village green, which would not involve individuals committing criminal offences. And I think you've answered that that would restrict village greens to vacant plots and also potentially to where the landowner uses them also for recreational use. The same recreational use or a recreational use. But apart from that, there is no other village green, or if you can, give me an example, that would not involve a criminal offence under the Victorian statutes.
Well, I suppose, for example, if you have a school playing field and the activities on the landowner there were simply to maintain football pitches. And they cut the grass there and maintained the goalposts. And it was used by schoolchildren for certain parts of the week, but was thereafter used by locals. Now, it may be there, but there's no criminal offence committed by, on this hypothesis, by the landowner. Because all they're doing is maintaining the land for recreational purposes. And now, and that's probably why, for example, I think one of the cases in Lancashire, this court will remember better than I, was a school playing field. And one of the reasons, I suppose, that they had to rely upon the statutory schemes under which the land was held there, was that there was no criminal offence being committed. They had to say, well, there's statutory incompatibility because we hold this for educational purposes, so that's.
No, they also wanted to safeguard the children and therefore wish to enclose the area.
Yeah.
There were young children.
Yes, that's right, but I'm sorry, I'm trying to deal with whether there's a criminal offence being committed. I suppose, for example, you get ornamental gardens of a stately home, and those are maintained as ornamental gardens. And the public uses those. And you could get a TVG established there without there being any criminal offence committed, because all the workers doing it is maintaining the garden and which might be said to be for recreational purpose. Sorry.
Yes, Mr Holden, sorry, it was just a point of detail. From recollection in the Lancashire case, there was no issue about criminalization of the landlord's activities. I mean, it's really, so far as that part, this part of the case is concerned, I didn't think that Lancashire helps one way or the other, it just wasn't an argument in that case.
Oh, no, I accept that, but I'm speculating, Lord Stevens asked me whether I could envisage where the landowner wouldn't be committing a criminal activity, because I think on the basis that the account of this one. But I would say, for example, you could get a school playing field whereby.
Forgive me, I misunderstood.
I'm sorry, it was my fault, I didn't make it clear, but I'm just using that as an example and then speculating that might be why. But maybe they thought they had a better point on the statutory scheme. But there are, I mean, it's where you go back to the traditional view of a town of village green. It's the green bit in the middle of a village, no one necessarily knows who owns it. In fact, one of the purposes of the original sixty five act was to get some ownership to those, because they were falling into disuse and they were, they were falling into disrepair. And one of the purposes was to, and no one knew who owned it. Why? Because no one wanted to own it, because there was only residual rights over it, because the public were recreating on it. And one of the purposes of the sixty five act was to get ownership or make sure that there was some ownership, that so they could be maintained. Sorry.
I mean, that way of putting it, it might be said that that comes very close to re-importing a test of the character of the land, the Auburn principle that you referred to, that Lord Hoffman deliberately put to one side. What do you say about that?
I don't, well, I wouldn't accept that, my lord, because as I said some time ago in my submissions, we say the crucial factor here is the character of the user by the landowner, not the character of the land. It's the, you have to focus here on the landowner's use.
Yes, thank you.
And as I've said, that's the key. And as I said, it may be indirectly relevant to say, because we use this to drive HTVs over. It may be more difficult to do that if this was sand or gravel or some other type of land. But the character is not relevant as a matter of, and I'm not seeking to overturn the Auburn test, which Lord Hoffman rejected.
It's right to say this is the first time the court has had to decide head on whether if the use of the landowner is inconsistent with the recreational use sought to be registered, TVG registration can go ahead, because that wasn't decided in Redcar.
Yes, it's certainly the first case in this court where it's faced head on the question of the interrelationship between the Victorian statutes on the one hand and section fifteen of the two thousand and six act, as it is now, on the other.
As opposed to specific statutory incompatibility as in New Haven?
Yes, that's right, that's right. So New Haven was a case, I accept, where there was a different statutory scheme under which, it was the port, specific port scheme in New Haven, and there were more general statutory schemes, I think, in Lancashire. One, a health authority, the other, a local education authority, I think, was the fact of Lancashire. But yes, this is, as a point I made, this is, we say, if there is a parallel here, it's the internal inconsistency. it's the internal inconsistency which arises from the Court of Appeals reading down of, or reading, reading of the section 15 of the Act.
Well, Mr. Holland, thank you very much indeed. That was quite a barrage from us to conclude your submissions. But it was extremely helpful to have those questions put to you and to get your answers. So unless there's anything else, thank you very much indeed.
I'm grateful.
Are you next, Mr. Charland?
I am, my lady.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my lords and my ladies. Before I begin on my submissions, this morning, Lady Arden requested a plan marking the extent to the town and village green. Now, I forwarded such a plan to the registry.
Yes, we've got it.
Excellent. You may also have received a second email which has got two plans. If you have, ignore that email. It's just the one plan with the red line.
That's the one I've seen.
Excellent, excellent. I'm very grateful, my lady. I was going to begin with a roadmap to my submissions. I'm going to begin with four introductory points. I'm then briefly going to address the fact. Thirdly, I'm going to address the court on the relevant statutory scheme and in particular, section 15, the Commons Act 2006. Fourthly, I'm going to look at the key case law, particularly Fitch and Fitch, the Oxfordshire case and the Lewis case. And then fifthly, I'm going to go through the three grounds, albeit that will be relatively brief because I will make a number of points when I look at the case law and the statutory provisions. So turning now first to my four introductory points. First introductory point concerns the Court of Appeals judgment. Court of Appeals judgment in this case results in an elegant and workable solution, which is consistent with the statutory language and which balances the public interest in protecting open spaces used by local inhabitants with the landowner's private interest in continuing its pre-registration commercial uses. These competing interests are able to coexist in harmony, as they have done so for many decades, including when the port was far busier than it is today. Although the appellant suggests that it has appealed to the Supreme Court because of its concern about criminalisation of its activities, the appellant, we say, was never at any real risk of prosecution as a result of carrying out its pre-registration commercial activities. Indeed, it is clear from its actions that it's well aware of this. The application before you today is an application brought through to section 14 of the Commons Registrations Act 1965. This does not suspend the effect of registration or the effect of the Victorian statute. In addition to bringing in its application, the appellant has also brought a judicial review claim, which has been stayed for the last seven years. However, it did not, as part of this claim, take interim relief suspending the effect of registration, which it could have done. Mr. Parker, the CEO and chairman of the appellant, when he gave evidence to Mr. Justice Barling, two years after the land was registered, did not suggest that the appellant had had to change the way it operated as a result of the registration of the land. There is no evidence that since the registration of the land as a TVG in 2014, this has caused the appellant any real difficulty. While the risk of criminal prosecution following registration was negligible at the time of registration, the Court of Appeals judgment in this case eliminated any risk of prosecution of the landowner for continuing their pre-registration activity. In reality, the appellant manufactured a concern about criminalisation of continuing use of the land as it is opposed in principle to the registration of the land as a TVG. Second point, my ladies and my lords, concerns the applicability of the town and village green regime to land used for commercial premises, the commercial purposes. Now, in his oral submissions, my learned friend, Mr. Holland, somewhat backtracked as to what he said in his written case. But we say that this point is still relevant. In the written case, the appellant suggests that Parliament cannot have intended the land used for commercial purposes to be registered as a town and village green. Now, when we look at the facts a bit more closely, it will become very clear that the port mistily in which the land in question is located is now very much mixed residential and commercial use, rather than purely commercial use. However, the reliance placed by the appellant on the fact it's used for commercial purposes, it's commercial land, is an attempt by the back door to bring in the character test that has been rejected on multiple occasions, both by this court and Parliament. Third point, my lady and my lords, in his written case, the appellant refers to the asserted rarity of land used for commercial purposes being registered as a town and village green. And this is relied upon to suggest, well, it cannot have intended that such commercial premises should be registered. The appellant actually suggests this is the first time commercial, land used for commercial purposes has been so registered. This is doubtful. Quarries have been registered in the past and agricultural land, as Lady Arden pointed out, has commercial use as well. But there's no national register detailing the land that is registered. However, the fact that it is rare for land used for commercial purposes to be registered as a town and village green is unsurprising. The owners of such land, no doubt invariably either exclude local inhabitants from using such land for lawful sports or pastimes or make clear, using signage, that such use of the land is prohibited. By contrast, the owner of the land in question here did not exclude or prohibit local inhabitants from using the land. Instead, it acquiesced to open, extensive and regular use of the land by local inhabitants for sports and pastime, including, to quote the Court of Appeal, walking with or without dogs, informal games, social activities, traveling and even occasional painting and drawing over a period of many decades. If the appellant landowner is unhappy that the land has been registered as a town and village green, it only has itself to blame. Fourth point concerns the scope of the grounds of appeal in this case. What permission has been granted? The appellant has permission to advance three relatively narrow grounds of appeal. First two grounds concern the impact of alleged criminalisation of the landowner's continuing use of the land on the registrability of the land. Main focus is the two Victorian statutes. Under the first ground, the appellant contends that if the appellant's continuing use of the land post-registration would, not may or might offend these two provisions, the land simply can't be registered as a TVG. Under ground two, the appellant contends that the Court of Appeal misconstrued the Victorian statutes and that contrary to the conclusion of the unanimous Court of Appeal, Mr. Justice Barling and the inspector, such continuing pre-registration use would be criminalised. We say to succeed in this appeal in relation to Victorian statutes, the appellant needs to succeed on both grounds one and two, they're cumulative, not alternative. If, as the Court of Appeal found, the Victorian statutes do not criminalise the appellant's pre-registration uses and ground two thus fails, success on ground one adds nothing because it's premised on the success of ground two. This appears to be in dispute if you look at the facts and issues articulated differently. The appellant's first ground of appeal is not, however, limited to the Victorian statute. Under this ground, the appellant also relies on two provisions relating to health and safety law. The appellant contends that the continuing pre-registration use after registration may, quotes, potentially be criminalised. In relation to the health and safety aspect of the appeal, there's no evidence to suggest that continuing pre-registration use would be criminalised and the appellant has not asserted it would be criminalised. Notwithstanding, we say that's an essential element of the first ground of appeal. Given the lack of prosecution over the many decades these provisions have been enforced, simply not open to the appellant to contend otherwise. It's also important to note what aspects of the Court of Appeal the appellant has not challenged. The three grounds of appeal do not challenge two important findings by the Court of Appeal. Firstly, applying the principle of give and take recognised in Lewis, the land, the owner of the land registered as a TVD could continue to use the land in the way which they had done before registration, where that was not incompatible with recreational use. And secondly, coexistence is a question of fact rather than law. Another preliminary point I want to make as to the scope of the appeal. My learned friend confirmed this morning that he accepts that that Supreme Court judgment in Lewis was correctly decided. He orally elaborated saying he accepted it was not in per curiam. My learned friend says it can be distinguished on the facts and the law. We're going to come back to both of those as I make my submissions. The initial point in relation to the facts, the arbiter of facts in this case, Mr. Justice Barling concluded it couldn't be distinguished. He found that the facts were on all fours with the Redcar case. In relation to my learned friend's suggestion that it could be distinguished on the law, as I understand what is being said there, it is being said that the Supreme Court in Lewis did not consider the Victorian statutes. Therefore, it does not apply, it can be distinguished. But that is essentially saying that the decision in Lewis was per incuriam, which he confirmed he is not submitting. But actually, in reality, there is no scope for distinguishing Redcar on the law.
With respect, could I just possibly just ask you about that? What they're saying is that in Redcar, they didn't have to go on to consider what would have happened if the landowner's use was inconsistent with the recreational use. It didn't arise, they assumed that that wouldn't happen. And so one can say, well, it didn't really cover this point and we've got to decide what the law is in those circumstances.
My lady, I hear what you're saying. And my learned friend said, well, using this land for recreational use, golf course and golf would not be criminalised. But my lady, that is incorrect. As I think Lord Stephens pointed out, golf courses have sand placed on them for bunkers. There is work done on them. Even when you swing a golf club, if you swing it badly, you damage the soil. And you'll recall, my learned friend took you through the Victorian statutes and said, oh, they're incredibly bored, there are all these separate offences, including damage injuring the soil. You couldn't have golf because that would be criminalised on my learned friend's analysis of the Victorian statute.
Well, I don't think their lordships, although I'm sure they included some golf players, went into it in Redcar on that basis. And they were saying, well, this is unreal to contemplate inconsistency. And in this situation, it's not as easy to be, to put aside inconsistency. I mean, businesses change. We know that the HTVs go across this area. People may want to walk across the area with their dogs, they've got to stop. And it may be that at times the area has to be cordoned off to enable the commercial activity or the activity of the landowner to be completed. So it's not quite the same as Redcar.
Well, my lady, in relation to that, we have clear findings of fact. Over the last two decades, people have been walking their dogs across this, day in, day out. HTVs have gone past it, across it, not every day, but a lot of days. And Mr. Justice Barling concluded, as a matter of fact, that these two uses coexisted without any difficulties. That is the trend, that is the factual basis that this court has to determine this appeal on.
Well, it may be that we need to look at that test as a matter of law. Anyway, there we are, I don't.
My lady, I, I, I'm very grateful. I have one further aspect to my fourth preliminary point, the scope of the grounds of appeal. Maybe slightly esoteric, but I think it's still important. It is notable that the appellant does not suggest that the decision to register the land in this case in any way interferes with the appellant's convention rights, including its right to property protected by Article One of Protocol One. Now, the absence of such an argument is important because it limits the court's scope of radical reading in of words to section, section 15, pursuant to section three of the Human Rights Act. In this case, there's no possibility of a section three interpretation and the court's power to read in words is far more limited.
Well, with respect, I'm not going, not myself thinking that there was a convention issue, but you have to recall the courts are public authorities and they're not bounded necessarily by what has been argued. But in this case, there has been no point taken, you're quite right about that.
Thank you very much, my lady. Can I now ask the court to, I now want to take the court to the facts. I'll do this quickly. This is a privately owned port. Unlike the port in New Haven, the appellant is not a statutory undertaker and has no statutory obligations as a port operator. For your note, that's the Court of Appeal paragraph eight, which is page 198 of the bundle. Can I now ask you to look at a plan? And I think the most readable plan is the plan annexed to Mr. Justice Barling's judgment at page 305 of the bundle. This is the same plan as my learned friend took you to set out in the agreed facts and grounds. But I just, at least on my version, the photocopy is clearer. I just want to take you to a few points on this, develop and add to some of the factual points my learned friend made. You'll see with the crosshatching area, the village green area next to the grapevine buildings. And you'll see the grapevine buildings are labelled with an arrow. These grapevine buildings are a mixture of residential use, including holiday let and light industrial use, particularly artisan use. The second respondent, Mr. Tucker, had a workshop there where he repaired early keyboard instruments. So that's the use there. My lady, can I, my lady and my lord, can I ask you to look at the plan? And below the crosshatched area where the village green is, there is a narrow area that is marked as eastern transit. Can everyone see the eastern transit? That area, you can see, is a lot narrower than the village green because you have the Edmay Thornkey warehouse jutting out. And essentially, the eastern transit is slightly wider than an HTV, but not any wide, not much wider. This is a narrow area that is the route by which HTVs and other vehicles travelled between the eastern and western parts of the port. Unlike this land, unlike the land held on the town and village green, pedestrians cannot easily move to get out of the way of the vehicle. There is a real potential danger here. This is why the port owner has put up a large number of signs prohibiting the public from entering this area and warning of its dangers. Can I ask you to turn to page 315 of the bundle where you can see these signs? And I will explain why this is relevant in a second. On page 315, at the bottom, you are looking from the town and village green across and in the distance you have the Maltings. And to the, on the left of the bottom photograph, you have the eastern transit, the very narrow area. And you have all these signs warning the public, strictly authorised personnel only, notice to parents, talking about the dangers of going into the eastern transit. It's accepted by the port owner that this is a dangerous area. Can I ask you to turn back now to the planet 305? Now, you will see an area marked the Maltings. My learned friend did refer the use of these. These are to the east of the Edmay Thornkey warehouse. This was once a commercial building, but it's now been converted. This was once a commercial building, but it's now been converted to residential buildings. Reference for that is paragraph 9 of Mr. Justice Barling's judgment, page 234 of the bundle. Importantly, the appellant granted the residence of these 70 apartments in the maltings, a vehicular and pedestrian right of way to and from the maltings, across the eastern transit, where it's not possible, easy to get out of the way of the oncoming traffic, and across the land now registered as a town and village green. Reference for that is paragraph 9 of Mr. Justice Barling's judgment, page 234. And it's addressed also in the inspectors' decision at paragraph 12.4, which is page 437 of the bundle. Thus, if the appellant is successful in its appeal and the TV is deregistered, there will still be individuals with a right to walk over both the town and village green and the far more dangerous eastern transit. In such circumstances, the registration has no conceivable bearing on the risk of prosecution for health and safety offences. I think this is an issue that was raised by Lord Burrows this afternoon with my learned friend. And he said, well, surely this is a red herring, the registration of the land and the town and village green and health and safety. My lord, that is precisely what it is. Whether or not this is registered, there can be no separation of pedestrians because they have a right to walk across it to and from the maltings. The appellant was not remotely concerned about health and safety issues, no doubt when he granted this right, including across an area that the landowner accepts is very dangerous, the eastern transit. So we say it is a complete red herring vis a vis health and safety. Next factual point I wanted to.
I'm sorry, Mr. Shalund, before you move on, Regulation 17 creates an offence, is that right? Regulation 17 in relation to rights to passages in workplaces creates an offence, if I understand it correctly?
It does create an offence, my lord. I'm going to take you to precisely the terms of the offence later on, but yes, that is right, my lord. And I think that's common ground.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much, my lord. The next matter I want to take you to is the photographs which you were taken to at My learned friend took you to these and there's no dispute that they detail the area that is the village green. However, I do want to comment on these because I think these photographs have been included to purport to show use of the TVG. My lords, it's important to note, these photographs are not in the agreed facts and issues document, they're in the grounds of appeal. It was suggested they went in the agreed facts and grounds, but they weren't agreed. And my lords and my ladies, the reason they were not agreed is essentially they've been accepted to be staged photographs that don't accurately reflect the use of the TVG. Could I ask you to turn to page 497 of the bundle? Which is the inspector's report, page 497, my lords and my ladies. And could I ask the court to read paragraph 16164 to itself, to themselves? So the point I'm making here is whilst those photographs show the location of the town and village green, they don't accurately reflect its use. Staying with the facts for a moment, it is common ground.
Just before you move from the photographs, I would find it very useful to have the photo tied to the plan so that I know, for example, on page 21, what we're looking at. What's the first building?
My lady, on page 21, the photographer appears to be standing, I think with his or her back to the grapevine, to the right, you see a vehicle there. Behind the vehicle, there's the Edme Thornkey warehouse.
Thank you.
And it's obscured by the vehicle, but beyond that, you have the eastern transit. Over the page, at page 22, this photograph appears to be taken by the photographer standing on the edge of the land that is becoming the TV, that has become the TVG, to the, looking at the right hand side of the picture, this is the photo on the top of page 22, you have a white car just above that, you have part of the grapevine. This is the row of buildings named after a public house that was once there, which is now residential, including holiday let and artisan use. Where you have the HGV behind that, it's the Edme Thornkey warehouse again. On this photograph, you've got a better angle to see what is known as the eastern transit. So just by the water, you, there is a narrow area, you go past the Edme warehouse and in the distance you'll see a large, what used to be a commercial building, but what is now residential, you'll see in the background there, maltings, that's 70 luxury flats that, as I explained, have a right of way across not only the town and village green, but the dangerous eastern transit area.
Are we talking about vehicle right of access or pedestrian?
Both, my lady, and that is clear from the inspector's report that I, and I've given you the references, it expressly says both. The photograph on the bottom of page 22, in the foreground, just behind the lorry, you have the Edme Thornkey warehouse, to the left, you have the eastern transit, and in the distance, the maltings. Turning to page 23, the top drawing, the top photograph, I apologise, you've got a more extensive view to the right of that photograph of the grapevine. That's probably the best photograph of the grapevine we've seen so far. You again see the Edme Thornkey warehouse and again in the background, maltings. At the bottom of page 23, the photographer is looking in the opposite direction. The last two or three photographs, they were looking towards maltings, eastern transit. Here, the photographer is standing on the town and village green area and looking towards what is known as the Stockdale warehouse, which you do see on the nearest plan, which is on page 20, the most accessible plan.
Thank you very much, Mr.
And page 24 for completeness, to the right, far right hand side, you see the grapevine, then in the background again, you have the Edme Thornkey warehouse, to the left of that, maltings, and to the far left of that, beyond the river, I think what you're seeing is Baltic Key and possibly the grain silos.
And the access to the village green, if we look at the plan, comes in from where the road is clearly shown, 1352 or elsewhere?
There's multiple access points, my lady. Are you looking at the plan on page 20 at the moment?
I am.
Okay. Do you see where it says Swan Basin?
Yeah.
That is a swan sculpture surrounded by water, if my recollection is correct, relatively small, quite quaint. You have the high street and the town and village green can be accessed by walking from the high street either to the right or the left of the grapevine. So that's the easiest way to access it from the high street. It can also be, that is a pedestrian access, I don't believe you could get vehicles down there, but I haven't visited it recently. It can also be accessed via the eastern transit if you're coming from the maltings area, or it could be accessed from the Stockdale warehouse end.
I'm just wondering about what rights there are to access it because this is all the land of the landowner, isn't it? There's a lot of point in having a village green if you can't get to it.
Yes, my lady, I accept that point. I don't, I'm not aware of any suggestion that there's any issue on access. I'm not sure I can take it any further at this stage. There's never been any discussion about, any problem about access.
But it might, just following it through logically, the answer for the landowner, I don't know what they do, what happens then if you're obstructing the access to the village green rather than the village green itself, then what?
My lady.
Sorry, that's a bit of a fast one. I'll leave it with you.
Someone at the curve for which I might like the shorter German to think about.
It would be very nice to know also what the position is about the parked cars, assuming as I do, that at least some of them will belong to the residents of the grapevine.
Yes, my lady, they are discussed in the inspector's report and I think they're touched on by Mr. Justice Barling's judgment.
I was just thinking of their legal implications for the village green.
But the village green doesn't actually go all the way up to the grapevine. If you see on the plan that was emailed to you over the lunch adjournment, you'll see that there is a gap between the grapevine buildings and the demarcation of the village green. And I understand the cars are essentially parked in that gap. Thank you very much. If I return to my factual points, before the various usual questions, I was saying it was common ground that there has been a significant decrease in the commercial activities occurring at the port. Paragraph 3 of the agreed facts is noted that there's been a decrease in overall tonnage from a peak of just under 450,000 tonnes in 1986 to approximately 174,000 tonnes just over 20 years later. Thus, if for the sake of argument, the appellant did decide to intensify its current use, it would be able to nearly triple the volume going through the port while still staying within its pre-registration use. Of course, there's no such realistic possibility of such intensification, given one of the key port buildings, namely the maltings, has been converted from commercial to residential use. So any purported concern about registering, registration preventing possibly intensification of the use is wholly misconceived, my lords and my ladies. Could I ask you to turn to my written case, which is page 127, my lords and my ladies? Yes, Lord Burrows.
Just before you leave the facts, Mr. Holland gave us an indication, and I may have misunderstood this, that this whole issue had been triggered by something about the erection of a barrier or something. I mean, is there anything you can help us in relation to what exactly is laying behind all this?
Well, my lord, my learned friend is correct, the event that led to the application for registration was the erection of a fence, basically on the border of the village green that is now registered and the water. My lord, it may assist if you turn to page 294 of the bundle. And page 196, sorry, paragraph 196 on page 294 of Mr. Justice Barling's judgment discusses the fence. So I think that may be the simplest way to look at it. There's been no appeal against these findings, so it's common ground. Very grateful, my lord. As I say, can we turn back to page 127, which is a part of our written case? I'm still in the facts. Paragraph 7, I quote the inspector, so this is page 127, paragraph 7, I quote the inspector who was actually quoted by the Court of Appeal in this, describing the land. This was in response to, I think, a character submission being made there, where he said, as it happens, the land could, in my view, be seen as having a slight air about it of a town or village square, albeit in this case on the one side open to the water of the estuary, rather than looking like a classic green. I mean this in the sense of it being a hard surface, multipurpose, publicly accessible area in or near the centre of the settlement and with buildings around at least some of its size. And so this is the inspector summing up his view of the character of the land. Appreciate my learned friend with photos and lots of HGVs parked over it was trying to suggest a different sort of character, but those photos are not representative of the use. What we have here is representative of its character. Can I now ask you to turn to page 128, the next page? And paragraph 10. My learned friend was very light on the factual findings by the court, and I understand why, but I do think it's worth reminding the court of where we are factually. And paragraph 10A to F, I set out various quotations from Mr. Justice Barling's judgment, and I'm sure you'll recall, there has been no appeal against findings of facts either to the Court of Appeal or this court, the permission was refused on that. I think the most sensible way is if I just ask the court to read to themselves those Is the court happy for me to continue? Very grateful, my lady. That's all I wanted to say about the facts. Now I want to turn to the law, going to start with the statutory provisions, particularly the Commons Act 2006. The first provision I'd like you to look at is Section 5 of the Commons Act 2006. that you'll find in the supplementary bundle, which I think you all indicated you had. But it's page three of the supplementary bundle. Section five is entitled Land to which Part One applies. Subsection one provides this part applies to all land in England and Wales, subject as follows. And the subject as follows essentially excludes from Part One of the Commons Act two thousand and six, free forests, the New Forest, Epping Forest and the Forest of Dean. I'm taking you to this because Part One includes section fifteen, the registration provisions. If Parliament wished to exclude land used for commercial purposes or land at private ports from the scope of Part One and the possibility of registration as a town and village green, it could have done so in this provision. However, it chose not to. Now, my lords and my ladies, I'm shortly going to take you to section fifteen and the criteria for registration. However, as we have the supplementary bundle open, I would like to take you to briefly sections fifteen and, sorry, section sixteen and seventeen, which is over the page at four and five of the supplementary bundle. Sections sixteen and seventeen set out the statute regime by which a landowner can apply to deregister land registered as a town and village green. I think three members of the court will be very familiar with this because it appeared in the Lancashire case. But for the two members who are not familiar, I'll take them through it briefly. If the land in question is less than two hundred square metres in area, exchange land does not need to be offered. If it's over two hundred square metres, the landowner does need to offer exchange land. It's thus open to the landowner if they say registration creates particular problems to apply to deregister. This is the route that the appellant should have adopted if he was unhappy with the consequences of registration. As far as the council is aware, no such application has been made by the appellant. As I say, these provisions were considered by the court in the Lancashire case. A paragraph sixty four, which is page six, seven, three for your note, don't need to turn it up. In the majority judgment of Lord Sales, Lord Carnworth, with whom Lady Black agreed, the court stated that these provisions were, quote, 'not designed to give effect to the public interest reflected in specific statutory provisions under which the land is held'. That, of course, is true. But there was no suggestion in that case that the provisions were not there to give effect to the private interests of a landowner if registration caused them particular difficulties. My lady and my lords, I note the time. I'm now going to turn to a different topic, which is going to take more than five minutes. My learning friend finished, I think, fifteen, twenty minutes early. So we are running ahead of schedule, which is nice. Would you like me to stop there or would you like me to carry on?
It sounds a bit as if you might like us to stop.
I'm a course in your hands, my lady.
And as we have got the time, that seems to me to be a very sensible course. So thank you all very much indeed, and we'll start again at the usual time tomorrow.
Thank you very much, my lady.